Okay, great. I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen here in Melville, Massachusetts to order a seven o'clock PM on March 21st. And this meeting is being recorded and will be shared online. People who want to see it. So before we get into the agenda, I thought we'd have a moment of silence for a town, a recent town employee who passed over the weekend or a couple of weeks ago. Very, maybe I should just say very recently. So Lisa Larue was a town treasurer collector through the fall. Someone who I think was very kind and always had a smile on her face. And unfortunately, she passed away. So I thought we would observe a moment of silence in her memory. Okay, thank you. Um, so since we have a couple of guests, I thought we'd jump around a little bit in the agenda. A bunch of Chief Coop and Chief Leard would love to spend their entire evening with us. I thought we would kind of get right to the parts of their time. Get to the parts of the agenda that are relevant to them. So this will be all the way down to item number six, a budget consideration. So Police Department and Communications. So if you have the big budget printed off. That's out. Here we go. So it looks like police starts on page three.
On mine, I have it on page four, but that's okay.
Okay. Well, so I have line starting at line 133?
Right.
Perfect. Okay. So I didn't have, I didn't have any questions, but I had.
So your sound cuts in and out, Jen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you know what? I mean, I have the budget on my laptop. Let me move it. Maybe that'll be good. So I didn't have any questions, but Andrew and Todd, I didn't know if you had any questions or Chief Coop, is there anything you want to maybe highlight as something new? Or where we should focus our attention?
Well, I can speak about some of our issues we're having with manpower right now. And one of the main reasons, which would be the Bridge Academy. If you think now is appropriate, mention that.
Yeah, sure.
So the state of Massachusetts made effective July 1st of 21, a new program, the Bridge Academy. Now, this allows a part-time officer to go through a very reduced training and in conjunction with a set number of hours, they're able to get training up to a full-time officer. Within about three months total time. And this is already affecting us because I have one of my offices already leaving to go to another town because of this. And he became certified and now he's leaving to go next door to Blackstone because they make a little more money. So it didn't cost us anything, but maybe there's a way to consider a possible payback on that or help them with their training as a form of retention. I'm not sure. The issue with this Bridge Academy taking such a short amount of time. Every officer that's part-time qualified, they'd be foolish not to go through it, even if they had to pay the around $5,000 themselves because they get that full-time academy. Where a full-time academy was about $15,000 in six months of their life. This is about three months total time in a part-time basis. So that's the main thing we're dealing with right now. And that's why I was looking for some extra money so I could possibly move up another full-timer if we can hire one.
Yeah, and I think just to supplement with what Chief Coop was saying. So in this budget, it follows the guidance. And if you recall in the guidance, we recommended that the chief consider, knowing all of these challenges, particularly in the part-time world and the Bridge Academy issues. We recommended, and in that budget is an additional full-time police officer. That also is a function of, you know, mitigation to the community for issues related to, you know, cannabis, retail in the town and these other things. So it all makes good sense. So he's followed the guidance to add that position, but he's, the challenge is filling the short-term challenge and the, you know, near-term challenge for the chief involves filling the full-time positions, number one, and being competitive with other communities. And at the same time, the, the trend towards losing the part-timers because of the Bridge Academy and their qualification to enter into full-time positions, but they're seeming to want to go to other, you know, better paying communities, I think is the way I would describe it. The other thing about his budget, just at the bottom line, their line 164, police capital leases. That's, that's been retained over the years here. So for this fiscal year 23 that's budgeted, we have the same amount that's been budgeted there for the past several years, but there's no capital lease outstanding. So it's in there as in part a placeholder, because we know that the chief in the Capitol Committee, we know that the chief's, the admin car is getting close to needing to be replaced. And right now Representative Soder is trying to get an earmark for an admin slash incident command vehicle. And failing that success there, this would allow for, you know, a lease of some sort of incident command slash admin vehicle. So I hope I sum that up, Chief, well enough not to step on your toes or anything there.
No, Peter, I appreciate the help with that.
Okay. And then one of the things that we had talked about, so for the Bridge Academy, is we could potentially leveraging ARPA funds. So we could potentially, it's a $5,000 cost. So we could say at the end of one year, they get 50% reimbursement. And at the end of the second year, they get the other 50% to try to keep them in Melville just a little bit longer. And then they get the full reimbursement of the Bridge Academy. Now, I don't know if we want to go, you know, 18 months and 36 months, or, you know, I think that 18 months to 36 months might be a bit of a stretch, but I don't, you know, I look to Chief Coop to your expertise there. But that's some of the things that we discussed as well.
Oh, I definitely agree that anything we do is going to help. Maybe if they got paid back within two years, we may get some retention there. Maybe it would have to be maybe nine months and 18 months. But we'd have to, we'd have to discuss that a little more. And I think also there's some other things that have to work out, like their hours have to be at 2,400 before they're eligible to work. The full-time status, so they couldn't even go anywhere until they get those 2,400. So we'd have to decide if they continue to work, will we start the clock there? There's a lot of things that would have to be worked out, I think. Still.
Okay.
Right. So the chief and I were going to try to come up with some basic parameters for that type of a program of, you know, necessary hours of these guys to ensure he's getting some shift coverage of part-timers in the right timeframe and, you know, split, if you will, of any reimbursement of bridge costs using ARPA funds. Then those, that, that program would then be presented to the board selectman for approval and so forth. Right, Chief?
That's correct. I mean, as soon as I know we're going to try and do something, I'll start working on it immediately.
Andrew, Todd, any other questions for Chief Coop?
Yes, I have a few. So for line item 134, the, that's for the additional full-time officer, correct? The increase largely?
That's correct. Yep. So it, it follows the union contract increases, which essentially are 3% increases each year. And it's a new position at the increased rate.
So this, the, the new position would be starting at the increased rate?
Well, it'd be the, the rate that's applicable in the, in the contract, right, Chief?
Yes.
Which means?
Which is, which is a little bit lower, right?
Okay. And then, so for the reasoning on, under this line item, it says to ensure safety for marijuana facility. Is there any supporting evidence for this or the reasoning?
Well, in the host community agreement for which we, the town gets a 3% mitigation fee, one of the rationales for the mitigation is the need for additional public safety. And this reflects that additional need and helps support the rationale for those, that 3% mitigation fee that in other communities is, seems to be starting to be challenged.
Okay. But is there any reasons for like an increase in police use or anything of that sort?
This is a general application of that need. Is how I would best describe it. Otherwise, we get into, you know, agreement. I think you're into executive session, legal agreement discussions, because.
No, I'm just wondering if we're using police officers more or substantially more.
It reflects that we, we are and will be, you know, they've been in business nine months. We have another one still evolving. We don't know where that's ultimately going to go, but we have the second one still evolving under a host community agreement with the same sort of mitigation fees.
Okay. And we have supporting evidence for this?
Again, you're starting to get into contractual discussion items.
Okay. So yeah, I'd like to see that. And then just a side note, the word insurance is misspelled in that line items explanation, just as a quick note.
Yeah.
And then for fire alarm system yearly maintenance, that went up significantly. Is there a reason for this?
What line item are we looking for?
Line item 146, I believe, police building systems.
600 bucks. I don't know, the chief, you're working off of contractual amounts and that sort of thing, right?
I see that I put that in there. I thought I level funded everything. The only one thing we talked about, Peter, was the computer system that I wanted to go up on and I thought I might have done that for some reason, but I can't.
You don't know off the top of your head, right? Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head. I know the one thing we talked about, the, the computer repair systems, but when he gave me an actual price on it, it became slightly ridiculous for me to go after that.
Okay. So Chief Coop, should we put line 146 at 1,900 then? Is that, or should we leave it at 2,500?
Um, right now, it escapes me why I changed that. I mean, I did, I did a level fund everything else.
Yeah, this is really not, you know, final budget items. So I think that's something he can explore. It's a fair question.
Yeah.
Right, Chief? You can explore that and we can tweak it as you might deem otherwise. Likewise, the same thing, you know, we may find out we're on an earmark or we may find out we're not regarding the capital leases, because you know, that, oh, that's a, I'll call that not a cushion, but it's a not 100% needed item at this stage of the game. And depending on how the, the model you see shows a $3,000 surplus right now, based on what's put in there. And that could change between now and by the time we get to town meeting, by the time it gets through finance committee review and all that sort of thing. But that's, that's where it's at right now. Usually there'll be a couple of iterations of this before we get to the final.
No, no, it's okay. I think, I think it's fine. You're not talking too much, Peter. Don't worry. It's not you. It'll be me. So I guess Chief Coop, if you want to look into that for us, and if not, then we can level fund it. But we'll leave it as is for now. If you're like, hey, I really can't find why I need the six or seven rolls, then we can reduce it and add for surplus.
I'll take care of that.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Coop?
They still have for the communication budget too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Right?
Yep, yep, yep. Are that people line is that on?
242.
242.
Yeah. So that was the position filled by Trish and there's, you know, technical and professional services in there. So.
And this, look, there's a modest increase there, 1.74%. So I'm assuming that's increase in services and fees and things like that, not anything kind of detrimental. A modest increase in salary through 3% as recommended. And then 31 whole dollars on overtime. So I feel.
The three, that was the 3%.
Yeah.
As the thousand or
Yeah, $1,230.
That too presents an issue for me. We just did interviews last week and one lady, I, would have been nice had she asked me this question before, but when she came in, she saved us the time of the interview by asking the salary on it because she was expecting 70,000. So obviously, I don't think we'd have any police losses if we could pay enough secretary that much. So needless to say, we had two applicants and, and they both expected more money in this position as well.
Yeah. So we're going back to the well, right, Chief, to see what else we can fish?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, you know, it's good that you still have that open position out there and I'll draw up a, as we spoke about, I'll draw up a compact job description that we can throw in the local papers and see what we can do with that.
Good. Yeah. So this is a position that was filled by Trish. It's been vacant. Chief Coop got stepped up into his role and without the administrative support over there. And he's managed pretty darn well, I would say. And he's was industrious in enlisting retired officer Blaine Shepard to assist in a number of these, you know, clerical but technical types of tasks there. So Blaine's being paid, you know, in a 1099 type of basis, basically. And is it helping, but it's not ideal. Is that a fair way to put it, Chief?
It's, it's definitely helping because I don't have to train Blaine. He already has his certifications. He still has his security clearance. So it's, it's worked out. Okay. I mean, it's not ideal. It's part-time. It's part-time hours that he can work. And he's trustworthy and, and it's worked out good enough.
Okay.
So is this, the communications clerk's, is that a full-time position normally?
The salary for that? That's Trish's old position.
Yeah, 40 hours a week.
Yeah.
35, yeah. Full time.
Okay. So right now, there's only Officer Blaine, who's in there part-time kind of.
Well, that and I have a couple offices. I pay them out of that line item right now when they do things like Trish did for responsibilities, like pistol permits and different things, because I have a lot more part-time offices working right now, shifts compared. So I have to make sure that I'm appropriately spending money. Keep a better handle on it.
Any other questions for Chief Coop regarding public safety communications? Looks like no. Okay. Chief Coop, if you want to take off for the evening, we certainly understand, but you're always welcome to stay.
I think, I'll listen. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. All right. So moving over to Chief Leard with the fire department, and that starts on line 168. We, that there's a 10%, well, 9% increase from last year. It looks like kind of the big jump was in firefighter EMT part-time wages.
And, and vehicle repair and maintenance.
Vehicle, should be vehicle.
Oh, yeah. 179. Yeah, big one.
Those two pieces, yeah.
So that's the majority increase. Okay. Um, so Chief Leard, I'm sorry, we didn't, you and I, Peter didn't meet ahead of time. And that's on Peter and myself. We should have scheduled that. But, um, so what's the increase in salaries? The firefighter EMT part-time wages?
I may have misunderstood. I thought I'll, following the direction, I thought I had done a 3% on all the salary and wages.
Okay.
Per the email. So that may have been something that, that was a mistake on my part.
Okay.
I thought you needed some additional coverages, but maybe not. We, we can circle back on that.
Okay. Why don't we do that then? Perfect. As Peter said, this is still a living document.
Right. That was my understanding.
Yeah. No, no, don't worry. This is.
Yeah. I mean, the, the biggest one, I think I, I thought in my mind that we had was for vehicle repair and maintenance. I did jump that up just to try to, as the vehicles are still, you know, next year, they're both, both the major trucks are going to be a year older and to try to, you know, knock on wood, hopefully we don't have any major repairs, but to try to avoid to have to go to a reserve fund transfer again. So I figured I would throw that out there and see if that would be something we could do. As I said, you know, both, both those trucks are 20 years with the age. The, the forestry truck is getting older as well. M1 is going to need, need various repairs coming up soon as far as brakes, new tires. Then a big, big chunk of the building of the, the vehicle repair, engine two is going to need tires probably next year in order to pass inspection. So working on getting some prices, getting back with some prices on that. So I mean, those are specialty tires. So it's a big, big money for those.
Okay.
Chief, when you had the truck away in Connecticut for the major repairs, the
Yeah.
reserve fund transfer was done. So hopefully those repairs carry it pretty darn well. But while that was away, your other one went down because of coolant, piping leaks and hose leaks and all of that. My recollection was it was repaired to get it back online as quick as it could be, but it wasn't necessarily the most ideal repair approach.
Yeah, that, that's correct, Peter. They did kind of a patch job to get us by. And at the time it was to, they didn't have the, the two pipes that they needed to replace. So they were going to order those. And, you know, luckily their patch job has been holding. But I mean, that could go, I hate to say it, that could go tomorrow. That could go tonight. We, we just don't know.
Okay. And then for the tires, Chief Leard, is that going to be more than $10,000, do you think?
Probably not for the tires, but I mean, I, I put that, I threw the 10,000 out there just to hopefully cover any unexpected stuff that may come along.
Yeah.
With any of these trucks. I mean, one truck we really shouldn't have to worry about is going to be the ambulance.
Shiny and new.
It's been serving us well and, you know, we're still very grateful that we, we got that.
Yeah.
But tires would not be insignificant, right? I mean, what are they? How many wheels on the big rig that you're talking about that you would need the tires for? It doesn't have to be.
For, they were talking six at a shot if they all have to go at the same time.
I see. Yeah. And those are good size and not cheap.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, one thing Peter and I were talking about earlier, and actually Andrew and Todd, we wanted to get your kind of feedback on this as well. Is that for anything that has kind of a longer life? And I don't know if it's capital, because Chief Leard, like you said, these tires probably aren't going to cost $10,000. But it's something that's a little bit more of an, a longer term investment rather than covering like a one-time expense. We were thinking about using ARPA funds for those types of things, since we're in a position to do that and preserve our stabilization accounts in our funds as much as we can. So for things like, you know, another thing that we'll be discussing in a few minutes is the asbestos repairs for the school. Rather than taking the, the operational budget using ARPA funds, you know, using ARPA funds for tire replacement. I think for other repairs like, you know, water pump, hoses, things like that, certainly that would come on this line item. But for things that have a little bit more longevity to them, thinking about ARPA funds. What do you think with that approach, Andrew and Todd?
I'm fine with using ARPA funds for that. It makes more sense than taking it out of stabilization.
Yeah, that's kind of my thought as well.
Certainly, I think that ARPA fund should be reserved for like one-time expenses. Just because it's not a good thing to rely on something that won't be there forever for cost of maintenance, maintenance-ing things that will be there. I mean, tires will go on in vehicles all the time. And so that, I'm not entirely, I'm kind of on the fence, but I'm not, I'm leaning towards doing that just because I don't think that it would be beneficial for us in the future.
Okay. But either way, I think that Chief Leard putting the money here in that line item. Right now, we do have a budget surplus, believe it or not. So I think we can kind of leave things as is. And then we can also see about line 170, because that's a 10.71% increase. So if that was off of this place. We have a more of a surplus, which is amazing.
And I think, you know, I think Chief Leard, he's protecting his department. It isn't that he's protecting his department. He's protecting the fire department, the EMTs to do what they do, right? And so he is being prudent to ask for this sort of increase on the repairs and maintenance. And if you look back, 2020 actual and $2020 were nearly 25 grand in repairs. 23 grand in '21, you know, 22 is screwy because of this reserve fund transfer, but the, the rest of it's not inexpensive too. So you know, whether it's 30 or it's 25 or it's 20, you know, is it, 25 is at least a good number there. You know what I mean?
Yeah. What I'm saying is, as we have a surplus right now, and I'm expecting line 140 to just go down a smidge, I think I'm fine with leaving that as is. And then that way it's available to Chief Leard. You don't have to do reserve fund transfer. He can keep his department operating. If something changes drastically for the other lines of the budget, then unfortunately we'll probably have to revisit that. But right now I feel very comfortable with this at this.
And I'm sorry, for, when you say line 140, what's that? Which line is that? That may be different than what I have.
Sorry. So I said line 170?
I'm sorry. Correct. Yes.
Firefighter EMT part-time wages. So that went from 84 to 93. So that was a little bit more than the 3%. That's all I was noting there. So if line 170, it goes down to a 3% increase, that'll give us even more of a buffer, which makes me feel even more comfortable with line 179 at $30,000, especially with the history.
But that line item, Chief, can vary depending on events, activity, if you will. If you guys get called at night to fight a fire in a house or something.
Correct.
You're calling out a bunch of folks that normally, you know, wouldn't be serving and therefore there's, you know, you've had a few incidents in this past year or so that rack up. rack up time and money.
Yeah, unfortunately, numbers of runs seem to be trending upward, whether it's in town or for our mutual aid requests have gone up quite a bit.
Yeah, so there's some variability. It's not like to that. So it's a bit of a guess. So the 3% on the previous budget number is still a guess. But I think so, Chief, you're going to look at that just a little closer, and we'll see whether that 3% works for you.
Most definitely.
Compelling reason to, you know, provide something else there for the unknowns that we seem to always have.
Yep.
Andrew and Todd, any other questions for Chief Lillard?
Yep, I have a quick one. Just for line 188, so fire admin and office salaries. It's not much money per se, but are we using that much more office supplies or are the costs just going up that much?
Between, I'd say a combination of that. I know with COVID, we were printing out a lot more things at the station to post the ambulance chain, you know, when there's changes to the EMS protocols, we print all those up, so we have to copy the ambulance. In years past, I know when under the former chief, if we need, as that line item on the fireside, we're on down, and we need something, he essentially would buy it or get it out of the police budget. So not the ideal way to do things, but if you have one chief running two departments, I mean, he has that discretion. So as it stands now, I believe we're close to with the latest numbers coming down to zero from that. And I still, you know, we're still only in, going to be coming up on April to make it up throughout the rest of the fiscal year. So that was why I kind of bumped that up a little bit.
And then fire overtime shift coverage. We expecting to be using that more, I'm assuming?
Yeah, the way, and that was just looking at the way things are trending now with calls, especially for after hours.
Alright, well, um, Chief Lillard, again, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to enjoy the evening, we also understand that you might want to do that.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, so then Peter, should we talk about the school OPEB change and asbestos?
Sure. So do you want to, so you want to just go to that, or do you want to, because, do you want, so you want to go to 6A3? Which then would encompass that info?
Yes.
Instead of circling back to it after the other stuff? Doesn't matter, you're
Yes.
While we're hot on budgets.
Yes, keep all the budget discussion together.
All right, so I'll just do the broader thing, and then I'll get to the schools, all right? So in the budget you've gotten, I sent you with some comments describing the basic points and assumptions in this basically first good pass, we show a $3,500 surplus, and that's what I've sent to the finance committee at this stage. And it incorporated the chiefs, the two chiefs budgets that we talked about. It includes the school numbers that were talked about at the joint meeting, which include, you know, BMR numbers. And BMR last week certified their budget, and those numbers remain the same. But in their certification, I sent you an email this afternoon from Matt Aronworth, which included both their certified budget, which is what's already incorporated in the model you have. But also in there was a request, two, for two articles, one was a school committee stipends that, you know, are consistent with prior years, they went away for a bit, but they're back on, and they're submitting that, and that's all good. More importantly, they have a motion for both towns to provide $100,000 combined for OPEB contribution to their OPEB trust fund. And rather than having that in their operating budget, that in fiscal '22, they have $25,000 in their operating budget for OPEB contribution. In fiscal '23, they had nothing in their operating budget for OPEBs until the towns figured out what they wanted to do. The discussion at the joint meeting was at least 100 grand. I went away thinking it was going to go into their operating budget, but here they're trying to do it offline. At the same time, in their operating budget, under debt service, they have included $55,000, which is the Millville share of FY23's asbestos remediation, okay? And they called it a debt item, a debt service item. I'm not sure of the technicality of that at this stage, but it seems to me that they that I'm surprised they don't have OPEB in there in their operating budget. The 100,000, in my view, is one-fifth of what it should be, or one-quarter of what it really should be, to start really tacking away at the $42 million liability, but I've been there, done that, talked about that enough. So I think the question is whether you folks have a sense, and Jen and I talked about this earlier. We think it would be better to, if they want to pull something out for a town meeting vote, it probably would be better served to have the asbestos item pulled out and put the OPEB in their budget. They've certified the amount, they can't go higher, they can always go lower. I think if they pull out the asbestos, that was like combined 240 grand, they could put the 100 grand or maybe more of OPEB in its place, and then have the towns vote on the asbestos as a capital item separate. So that's just a thing, you know, we haven't had discussions any further with any, I haven't had anything further with Matt regarding their rationale for how they did, why they did it this way. So.
Yeah, and I don't, I agree with this strategy, obviously, Peter and I discussed it, but I think that the asbestos repairs, that's like repair to a building. That seems more like a capital expense that we would want to fund potentially out of ARPA, again, preserving our funds. You know, if we can spend other monies and keep our stabilization, protect our stabilization accounts, I think we should do that. And then also, the reason why I think OPEB, the funding should go there is because there is a line item in here already. It's like 800 something thousand. I don't know if it's broken out, but I guess the point is that out of this operating budget, we're funding these benefits right now to retirees. So to me, it makes sense that we save for those benefits also out of the operating budget. So I would prefer to pull out our asbestos portion for Millville, whatever it is, out of our little capital, and fund that through ARPA and put the OPEB in here. And I think that's a habit we want to have, that the OPEB number is part of the school budget going forward. And I know, Peter, that you think 100,000 is not a lot, but it's more than we did last year.
Correct.
That we're, you know, slowly but surely chipping away. So that's, I just, I feel like asbestos in a building repair is a capital expense. And it's labeled here as capital, but I would pull that out and fund it through ARPA, and then we can easily fit in the OPEB.
Yep, the OPEB is, as you say, it's an employee benefit cost. It's just not well-recognized.
Yeah, where, Peter, is it on here, like in this on the revenue budget and assessments? Because I remember in the more detailed discussion we had on March 2nd.
Yeah. He just footnotes, does not include OPEB or new cap, so it doesn't also include any new capitalization for the boiler yet, right? But it does say asbestos work is included in capital in the 191,000 number of capital that he has on the lower right of that one sheet.
I see that.
Okay, so 55,000 of that relates, you know, 128 or 140 of that relates, 135, I guess, relates to debt exclusion for the projects, the various projects that have happened in the past, that they've bonded and are paying debt service on. The 55 is tacked onto that line for the one-year cost of the asbestos. One-year remediation cost, town share. So at some point, you'll have BMR come to your meeting to talk through their budget, but in the meantime, if you all are a sort of a similar sentiment of the right geography is partly what I call it, you know, it's accounting geography, that the OPEB should be an operating cost, not determined by the town, it's a, it's managed by the BMR leadership, the benefits provided and the, and the recognition of the costs associated with it. It's their debt. Even though the town guaranteed that debt, if you will, when you signed the new regional agreement.
And if this doesn't, if we have a separate motion and it doesn't pass, then we're not saving anything.
Right.
And I mean, to be honest, I'm not super concerned about that, because again, I guess we would just fund it out of ARPA anyway, and perhaps we would need to have a motion, it would need to improve by capital. But I just don't, I think we need to get the towns and the school committee in the habit of thinking of OPEB as something that is part of the operational budget that we're saving for every single year, trying to chip, chip, chip away at that $42 million.
And growing.
And growing. Andrew, Todd, any thoughts?
I completely agree with that. It's not a one-time cost, so put in the operating budget.
And I see Todd, I see you nodding, yes?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. Any other comments about the budget generally? I, one was thrilled that there was a surplus, even though it was like $3,000, but yay. So it was still a surplus, and, you know, maybe it'll even grow a little bit with some of the things we discussed tonight.
Yeah, so some things you might want to think about is what other departments you might want to talk to. So you've already discussed council on aging, you've talked library, you now talk public safety. At the next meeting, you'll have BVT, which will probably be, you know, fairly likely part of the agenda. So I don't know that you'd have room in the agenda for too much else, but at some point, you probably want at least BMR. I don't know about what others that, you know, as you look at this closely, others you might want to talk to departments before finance gets to their, ultimately, their public hearing. And, you know, I'll continue to look at these things, but I'm pretty comfortable with most of the information. The cannabis revenues, I've tried to be modestly conservative in estimating those, and those do make a difference in the overall models, you know, determination of deficit or surplus. So if need be, there's a little room there to go larger if need be.
So Peter, like with the town clerk and the building inspector and board of health, because I kind of think those are all within
They follow guidance.
Review, yeah.
Guides. Town clerk has a few extra things, but she can readily identify those specific to, you know.
Anything scary.
Voting or, yeah, that's right, that's right, yep.
Okay.
Building, I kind of, you know, I kind of did his budget based on, I helped him with that. Assessors, you know, they've submitted that. We're working out some, they had one item that they submitted that, forgive me, that, excuse me, but that they, they won't need, and it was for outsourced admin services.
Okay. And then I guess the only other budget that could potentially be big, you know, every year with snow and ice and all that stuff is highway. But we're looking at potentially getting funds for infrastructure, so I'm not worried about that one, because I feel, again, we'll be able to fund repairs and other things like that out of federal funds that are coming our way.
That's right, and there are also grants available. So let's say the stormwater budgets, these are, you know, level funded year to year. They're not insignificant. I don't have any information from Brian that suggests that level funding is, you know, not a wise move. But we've just basically gone through, we haven't completed the MVP process, municipal vulnerability preparedness. And one of the objectives of that, or the reasons for even doing that, is it then enables you to chase a variety of grants, particularly stormwater-related types of things. So, you know, to the extent we're short on something here, there's ways to make it up, both in ARPA as well as federal funds and the infrastructure, as well as leveraging into other resources that may be available.
Yeah. Andrew?
So one quick question. So I remember the last meeting, we still had three budgets that hadn't been submitted, have they been submitted at this point?
So I have the assessors, I don't have board of health, and I don't have highway. So I've used guidance on both of those.
I know Andrew would play hardball and say you don't get any money, but I don't think we can do that, Andrew.
Yeah, but at this point, I'm, you know, I'm just using guidance, and, you know, I think anything submitted, you know, people, unless people have a really compelling reason why it should be different, I, I don't know why it would be.
Especially when we have all these other resources available to us, at least for highway. Well, and we could use ARPA with board of health to have something, hey, this
That's right, yeah. I mean, one of the things they were concerned, have been concerned about is just the level of need for inspectional services as well as nursing services. But they have entered into a very attractive nursing agreement, a high level of service for low cost compared to what was being provided previously. So they did a nice job hooking up with a, you know, a great service provider for the town.
I mean, as Jen, Chair alluded to, I would suggest just flatlining them completely, because, I mean, you have a guideline, you follow it, I have, I'm stickler for that, so.
No, I think he did do that, Andrew. I thought you were going to say they get $0 for not putting anything in. So no, Peter did do that, right, Peter?
Yes, I went, I went to my guide. So where there was a salary, I provided the increase for that, yes.
Okay.
I would put zero, but zero increases.
Andrew's going to be the tough manager.
I know.
No.
Well, I mean, deadlines, you know, and
Yeah.
You let it slide and.
Yep. The other one, I have in there animal control officer, just talked briefly about that. I had a line in my email to, you know, having discussions with Uxbridge and five other, you know, four other towns to regionalize the animal control officer for whom we pay a stipend. But he really is out straight. And so they've come up with a good plan that prior to any grants that might be obtained, I put the highest number that would likely be. So it's an increase of, I don't know, five grand on that line item. But, and I'm not telling you here, but there is a grant that's going to be awarded to reduce that number there. So by the time we get to town meeting, I will know a better number, but right now, the available funding from the state is embargoed is the word they use. So I can't tell you, or I, you know, I just can't tell you. It won't be as much as I have there.
Okay. Well, I'm very excited about this budget, that it's, we have a little bit of a surplus, you know, things are balanced, and, you know, we're very fortunate to, in this time, to also have ARPA funds to preserve stabilization accounts, like very, very lucky, very fortunate.
Yeah, and the department heads, you know, everybody works hard to try to do it. This town does a lot with little. For sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna, are we done with item 6A in its entirety, the budget?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back up to the top. So Peter, over to you for announcements.
Okay, um, so just let folks know that they're, uh, they probably seen it on Facebook, the Conservation Commission is putting a Earth Day cleanup on Saturday, April twenty-third, nine to noon. So they have a nice little flyer that's gone up on Facebook and just letting folks know about that. They'll supply bags and gloves and trash bags and water, so it's a good opportunity to clean the town of Millville and get involved. Just a reminder, you guys that approved the Chestnut Hill Community Association toll day, which is coming up this Saturday, nine to twelve, they'll be doing it at the basic intersection there of Lincoln Central and Main. Hopefully, they'll ensure they don't try to get money out of folks in cars that are moving and not impeding the traffic to get through, and they'll get them at stop, when they're stopped, but so hopefully, and they'll raise some money, hopefully. Other announcement, just to let folks know, you know, that it started, the impetus for Memorial Day Parade was brought forward by Jeff Wing, who's the commander of American Legion Four-Eleven, Millville American Legion, who also is our landlord. And so he's got a group together, and they're starting the process, met with him and one of his legion members, and they, that happened today, they did raise some concerns, and I'm thinking where this is going to wind up going to ensure that the the Memorial Day can happen. BMR, Martian Band has signed up already to do it on Memorial Day. They've, they really want their, the ball is rolling. But I'm gonna think, it looks to me that the solution to the problem that they brought to me today is going to be that you, the Board of Selectmen, appoint the folks that are already on this committee, and to the extent others may want to participate, you would evaluate that, appoint them as a Memorial Day Committee. And therefore, that then puts them, puts it as a town initiative covered by town's insurance, liability insurance, number one, and just makes it cleaner for them and everybody else involved. It also enables an easier way to free up the budget of five hundred bucks that's in the budget for spending on whatever needs the committee to do. So it will become a town-sponsored event in essence. So at your next meeting, that's what I would plan to do is bring you folks to appoint to this committee, unless you have major objections, and I know you're just being presenting this right now, but I, you know, it it came up at this afternoon, and, you know, otherwise, they can't really move forward, they don't have the coverage for that type of event. And it sort of stops things, at least for the time being. So I'd rather, you know, they'd rather keep the ball rolling, you know, they're gonna get, I don't know, groups that have, you know, military vehicles in the parade and that sort of thing. I mean, you know, it's gonna be pretty good, and it seems like it's a, been a very positive thing for the town before my time, folks like it, and you have a willing group that want to get their hands dirty to make it happen, so.
Sounds great.
That's it. Okay.
Anything on item number two, Andrew Todd, otherwise, oh. Okay, so moving on to correspondence, I read that letter.
Yeah. That's wrong.
A lot of science stuff.
Yes. Yes, that was there to let you know. I mean, at least we're trying, you know, we haven't heard back from SDP, but that was, I was the email cover letter of that memo that Dr. Gullik, our water expert, and he is one of the top experts in the world, frankly, and we've been fortunate to have him be interested in working with Millville. And so he evaluated all types of testing we do, the results, the frequency, the cost, and he's put together this memo that you, that was in your packet, not that you necessarily needed to read it too closely, but the objective is to collaboratively get Mast EP to reduce the required amounts and frequent types, frequency and nature of testing. And so he's, he puts forth the science, he puts forth his recommendations on what should be done, and does it by types of various tests and provides results and his analysis of those results.
Yeah, what I find most shocking is just the first sentence in the second paragraph, it's over thirty-six thousand dollars a year that we're spending on this. And that's a lot of money.
Well, that's on the analytical costs alone is what he's saying. So we're, we're, you know, it's a sixty grand a year, so in the budget, I reduced it by twelve to forty-eight. We'll be lucky if we get by with sixty this year.
Yeah. Hopefully. So he sent this memo, so does that mean for the next fiscal year, you have it at forty-eight? Should it, I mean, it sounds, his, it sounds like so more appropriate sample schedule should cost about five thousand per year. I'm assuming there are other costs there as well. But could we take that, could we half that, could we make it like twenty thousand dollars?
Well, we don't know what they're going, going to agree to, see? So I'm trying to be reasonable, we'll get it on the flip side, we get it in, you know, turnbacks to free cash. But, you know, just trying to get them to see the light, them, Mast EP to see the light here, is part of the challenge. So we're trying to not be confrontational.
Yeah. Yep, okay. Um, so I saw we got the meeting minutes?
Yep, you did get them. If you had a chance to look at them, great. I only had one challenge. My, I mean, I, I did, I always fix what I find, but there was one vote that the wording looks screwy, so I think we're gonna need to get that looked at.
Okay.
Where was it? Oh, yeah, it's on page four, talking about the purchase of the, it's the ten thousand dollar part of the senior center van, what your actual motion was. What's written here is screwy, so just want to make sure the wording is correct based on the, you know, going back and looking at the that part of the meeting.
Okay, so should we?
So we can table that, especially if you haven't all had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, okay, why don't we table it and get the wording right, and then we can, I did look at it, but let's make sure we have the wording right, and then we can figure that out. Okay. Um, so departments, board of health update, if any?
Uh, Sherry did give me a little update late last week, you know, the testing, the positivity rate's down to one point four percent or less compared to where it was. There were nine cases in the month of February, you know, various ages, mostly younger, some of the three of them were kids. And so the, the board health's recommendation at their last meeting, and we basically come to that conclusion based on the way things are going, is that, you know, you don't require to walk in with a mask in town hall or senior center or whatever. If someone's uncomfortable, they can put a mask on for themselves. That's really where it's at, so.
Yep, I think that sounds good.
Individual, yeah, to take care of themselves.
Okay, that sounds good. And I just wanted, um, since I know masks are optional now, and people might still be wearing them, I thought I would share, like, you might still see me wearing a mask. And I have two reasons, one is not COVID-related, actually. So about two or three years ago, I developed allergies, and wearing a mask really helped. So I used to take the commuter rail to Boston, and I'd be the only person wearing a mask. I felt like I looked like a criminal, but it really helped my allergies. Um, so that's like, I started, when, actually, when COVID hit, my, Sherry was like, we don't have any masks in the house, we need masks. I said, actually, I have masks. Because I'm on the train. He's like, great, so we coincidentally had, that was one reason. Second one is COVID-related, just because I, and I wanted to share this just because I think people look at me and don't, you know, I don't look unhealthy. Um, but I actually had gestational diabetes with both of my pregnancies, and one of the long COVID hall symptoms is diabetes. So I don't want to develop that. My dad died from complication in diabetes, and if I live as long as him, I actually don't have that much time left. And that's kind of scary to me. So if you see someone wearing a mask, know that could be allergies or something totally not related, or, you know, something that they're kind of concerned with. Um, and if you don't want to wear a mask, you know, obviously, that's completely fine also. I just wanted to share that in case, if someone might not want to tell all these personal things, like I tell everyone all these personal things, much to my husband's chagrin, shall we say, but I just wanted other people to know that, you know, it's okay if you still want to wear it on, you might see me still wearing one in some situations. And some could just be allergies, and my eyes start watering, and I'll put it on, and it really, really helps. That's all. Don't make fun of me, it could be my allergy. Um, okay. Anything else on, and I'm thrilled that the numbers are going down, I hope they, I I think everything's moving in the right direction, which is very exciting.
Right.
Okay. So BMR school committee vacancy, so actually, this came in, it was out of order in my packet for some reason. I saw your four points.
Yeah, actually, I asked the town clerk to just, I said, Diane, I read, I I read the email and I read, you know, what was in your packet for the school committee vacancy initially, including the copy of the applicable sections of the regional agreement. I said, I read it and I read it, but I still can't figure out what exa, what are the simple things I have to do? So I asked her if she could put sort of three or four bullet points of what has to happen. She quickly did that, so that's what you've got late this afternoon. So basically, what what's happening is there go, is going to be a vacancy. I think it's effective in a couple of days. Someone is resigning from the school committee, the be on Millville's side. And so that vacancy, to fill it, you know, is letting folks know that there is a vacancy, if anybody's interested in serving, being appointed to fill in the unexpired term of that person, which is annual town meeting twenty twenty-five, so two years left to go. Um, three years left to go on that term, rather. And so what would happen is you'd have to have a joint meeting with the BMR school committee. You'd have to post it apparently a week prior to the joint meeting, and it has to be scheduled within one month of being notified of the vacancy, which I guess effectively that's Jane's email. The resignation is effective three twenty-four, twenty-two.
Okay.
So I don't know whether it's, whether the meter starts on March fourteenth, when Jane sent that email, or the meter starts on three twenty-four when the vacancy occurs. I'll double check that.
Okay, we're either way, we're in the window.
Yes.
Yep, so it sounds like we should, I guess we should promote and like look for people who are interested in filling the vacancy. If you're interested in being on the school committee, you know, reach out to Peter, myself, Andrew, Todd. I, Peter and I attend many of the meetings, and they're very informational, they do, I feel like they do a good job sticking to the agenda and moving things along. Um, when people keep meandering and things like that, because it can go long, she can speak about, nope, keep to the, keep to the topic.
Yeah, and I misspoke, this would be, this, filling this position, if somebody stepped up and said, I'd like to be considered, and the joint committees approve, you know, voted that person to fill the, uh, the vacancy, it would just be until the next election in twenty twenty-three, not through twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay, so the one-year trial in that position, they might find they like it and want to keep going.
Yeah.
And run.
Nope, that sounds great. Okay. All right, so let us know. So six B, moving to the annual town meeting warrant close date determination.
Yep, so there was a question, and I checked with council, you can pick the the closing date tonight.
Okay.
A closing date in the future, you can pick tonight.
Okay.
You'd be advised to do that.
Okay.
And I think you had talked about April eleventh, which allowed a week or so for the newly elected member or members of the board to participate.
Okay. So looking for a motion to close the annual town meeting warrant on April eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to close the annual town meeting warrant on, what did you say?
April eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
April eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Andrew. So any discussion, any questions, concerns before we vote? Okay, and I'll do roll call vote, so all those in favor, Andrew, you were first.
I.
Todd?
I.
Jennifer is I. So Todd, the shortcut, when I like say what the motion should be, you could just say so moved, and then I.
I was gonna do that.
Long capital planning meetings, I'm like, oh, so moved. I don't remember everything that's in. Okay, um, board of selectmen survey, so this is something, um, I had talked about previously, I was thinking that we would have a meeting, maybe like, and just like get people to talk to us and do like a kind of a more stuck in public hearing or town hall or whatever we want to call it. Um, but now we're so close to the annual town meeting, I don't want, I know it's tough to get people to attend even the annual town meetings, so I don't want to overburden people. And so I'll only use his first name, but Crofton, he suggested, hey, why don't you send out a survey, it might be easier, it might be more cost efficient, and so I came up with, um, this survey, and I was wondering, so we can go over the questions now? Or if you want to just send me feedback, it's up to you. If you had any feedback, you thought it was absolutely perfect as is. I'm thinking, I'm just imagining the response as we get to the ones that are like fill in the blank. I think those will be very colorful. Um, and I can put it up on the screen, Alex, could you make it so I can share my screen, please?
Should be shareable now.
Yeah, these all look good to me. I looked at them when you sent them out the other day.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so first one, just, I want to just kind of, what's your biggest concern? So close, I have all these white lights, there we go. Um, and just leave it blank, and then renovate these in order of importance, so the high school situation, fix other infrastructure, roads, bridges, find a solution for the long full bridge. I was wondering if I should have an other there, but with question number one, I thought that might be redundant.
Is it just me, or am I just looking at her desktop?
Yeah, I'm not seeing it.
Okay, hold on. How about that?
There you go.
Okay. Okay. And then this one, Peter, question four, I guess we should maybe review with the capital planning committee.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, even just in three, I would add a, between B and C, I'd add a different C and say, repair the old, you know, repair the building, because that's kind of on our radar.
New, yeah, newly on our radar.
Yeah. And then, yeah, I, I, that was the only other thing I would recommend, is having capital go through these a little bit as well. If you think we have time, that meeting is next week.
Yeah, I think we have time.
Because otherwise, it looks great.
Yeah, I hadn't, this looked good.
And then number five, so did you like see the board sign reduce from five to three? I don't know if we should maybe have a, please explain, or do you have any comments or something?
Yeah, why?
Yeah.
And just, um, question five, is the impetus for this question just because the the trouble we've been having filling the positions?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it. I personally wouldn't like to have three, because I, I mean, I, I feel really lucky that we have our board. I know we don't always agree, but I feel like the disagreements are very respectful and a good conversation, but I have seen. and a good conversation. But I have seen previous meetings where disagreement wasn't as respectful. And I could imagine being on the board with other people and having those meetings just be not productive. Um, so what other things should we be addressing? How can we get others involved?
Yeah, number eight, that's a very important one.
Yeah.
You know, when you think of the various committees that have vacancies and or difficulty getting people on.
Maybe we should say that explicitly, like we have many vacancies on committees and boards. How can we get others involved?
Yeah. It is the lifeblood of a small town.
And then I just lay left any other note. So what's going well, what's not going well, what changes to be made?
It could be very interesting.
Oh, I think it will be.
Been asking for a.
I know. They'll just be all like throwing tomatoes at that section. That's what I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, and then what I thought I would do is Peter, is this something I could work with Diana on? Cuz you, I know when she does those flyers for like the senior center, they're like on that fluorescent paper or like something like this.
Yeah.
Like a bright color. We could nail that out.
Yep.
Okay, so um. So I peel Peter cuz he's the chair of the capital playing committee. We review this at the next capital. I know he's so happy about that.
Lucky, yeah.
Well, I review this with the capital playing team, but are Andrew and Todd, are you, I am, I'm guessing there'll be changes to kind of question four. Maybe two, three, four. And that's it. So provided there's not anything drastic, would you be okay with us making changes to mostly those questions and then sending it out? Or would you want to see it one more time?
Yeah, I mean, I personally want to ask you what changes were made just.
Okay, then we won't vote on this tonight then, Andrew. So I'll have, we'll have this on a future agenda as well. So Peter, um, you can review this when you chair the capital planning committee meeting and then we can go over again. Okay, cool.
One quick question, just as a more of not, not really um anything other than more of an observation or I don't know how to quite phrase it, but um for the question five, are we sure we wanna? Uh, that would be the one to move it from five members to three members. I think that's a question, if I'm right.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, are we sure we want to open that? Can, I, I don't know.
I guess like, so it's not a commitment to do so. But just, I just wanted to kind of see what people thought. But if you think if we're not doing it, why ask the question? Um.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure if I'm entirely. I would, I personally would just like to see if the board stayed the same with the amount of people, even if we're not able to fill it just because three members, I, I don't know if that would work or be of any benefit, but that's just my.
Totally agree. Yeah. No, I very much agree with you, Andrew. Um.
That was brought up on Facebook too, and it went like fifty fifty with what people were responding to it's all.
Okay. Well, we could take it off and say, you know, what questions are missing? And if everyone puts this on there, then we can revisit it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you, you, we can leave it on for now and kind of see where this goes and.
Okay, since we're gonna review it one more time. No, good point, Andrew. Okay. So I guess if anyone's watching and thinks that's a great question, make sure you leave it on, you know, let, let this team know. Um, otherwise just cuz the town I grew up in, they have a three member board and it's like a, it can get crazy. Like they had a recall and then it was like, like the newspaper articles were insane. I mean, it just got very out of hand. I wonder if that's personalities too. Like we're all kind of like, hey, I don't agree with you. I don't think you're a bad person. Or other people like, I disagree with you and I think you're terrible. It's more like we just disagree. It's fine. Okay. Uh, oh, so a discussion or review of boss policies and procedures. So I had one, I'm sure you both can remember, uh, know what I'm gonna suggest. So I reviewed the policies and procedures. I thought, I didn't think anything needed to be changed, although I think Peter does have a change um or an update. But I think we might want to consider having a new, an additional policy regarding social media. And the reason for that is um is, and I don't think is, well, the reason is because I think all town members should have access to town information. Now, that doesn't mean everyone gets to see pictures of your kids or your wife or your husband or whoever. But it's, for example, one post that I had difficulty seeing because of the block was the Santa route. And I have a child, that's her picture, who loves Santa and wanted to see the route and I wanted to get information on it. So, and I think that when you're blocking access to information on Santa from kids in Millville, like I just don't think we should be doing that. So now I don't want to see pictures of your, if you're like, hey, I don't want you to see pictures of my kids. Hey, I get that. I, if you're not comfortable with me seeing pictures of your kids or whoever, or let, you know, I went to Target today. You don't want me to know that either. All of that's fine. When you're talking about library hours or an event in town or a change in a meeting or something like that. I believe that every person in town should get access to that information. And that was my primary driver for um creating my separate selectmen Facebook account cuz I put everything on there. Um, all my communications, you know, posts, the Santa route, everything goes there. Um, but I just wanted to know, Andrew and Todd, what you thought about that? If you disagree, you're not a bad person.
I think there should be something there, but I'm not sure how you go about it. Are you, you talking about limiting what people post or limiting who they block?
I think it's, if you're going to post something about the town, you can't have anyone blocked on that post. And if you're going to say, well, I'm gonna keep people blocked on my Facebook account forever, then you don't get to post any town stuff on your Facebook account. That's all. You don't, still post that stuff.
What would that be?
I don't think you can go post by post and choose who you block and who you don't block.
Right. Well, so you have to unblock and block. So you can, it's a huge pain in the butt. That's why I just have my selected account.
Everybody that's not friends with me blocked, so.
I mean, I guess my only concern would be how that would work. Like, how would we be able to implement that?
What do you mean?
I don't know. Well, like, so you're saying that if any information is released by the town, it can't be blocked by anybody? Or how?
Right. So I, I, so I'm not sure about the blocking, unblocking cuz I don't do Facebook that much. Um, but it is a, there's probably some best practice social media policies floating around out there. We could get from council, right? Key is that we limit the exposure of the town and the individuals to public record, you know, open meeting, open meeting law violations, number one. And two, everything you do post as in your role as a selectman, not in your personal lives
Right.
or personal, you know, Facebook accounts is a matter of public record. So some pos, there's probably some, and, and it really also relates to the uh personnel procedures and policies as well that, you know, I'm in process of looking to see about getting updated, right? So I'm talking to a, for best practices. And one of the things glaringly absent in that is a social media policy, even just for employees. So that there, you know, the town has uh set up some basic restrictions. So and, and they're probably very similar to what you're trying to do here. Again, it's provide uh all records are public. All postings are public. If you're doing them with your select, selectmen hat on.
So I don't know if we want to require a worse like remember to have a separate Facebook account to share town information or you just can't share town information on your Facebook account if you want to keep it personal. That would be the two routes essentially.
Yeah, so part, so part of it is also the distinction of whether you're, you're representing the town in some opinion or something you say versus your notifying of events and dates and stuff like that, you know, there's, you know, that's one thing that typically is the path of least resistance and least exposure is just notifying of events and activities, you know? The meeting is such and such a, whatever's happening. Um, or these, you know, there's the cleanup day. So there you have the conservation commission, subject to open meeting laws, posting something about a conservation commission sponsored event. And they're just, that, that's, that's no big deal, but they're not posting it as the conservation commission. I think maybe you're talking about should you have designated selectmen as the speaker of Board of Selectmen postings on behalf of the board. Maybe that's what you're.
Put a Facebook account and then put everything through that.
Yeah.
I just think that there's like a fine line of whether it's your opinion as a resident of the town or is it your opinion as a Board of Selectmen member? And how do you distinguish that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, and I wasn't, the example I gave was more around like, what's the Santa route? What are library hours? What's the, you know, that kind of thing? I mean, if you're like, I don't know, let's pretend I don't like Andrew. If I put on my personal account, I don't like Andrew. Like, I don't know that everybody needs to see that. But if I say, hey, library, the library is closing all of next week. That's, you know, that's like kind of like a scheduling change where everyone should know that, not just, you know, even Andrew, even though I don't like him, he should get to know that the library is closed.
He didn't see it cuz you have blocked.
So announcements, I guess. Sorry, Andrew.
No, 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 you can finish that.
I was thinking, so announcements of town events, hours, things like that, I think need to be available to everyone.
Does the town have a Facebook page?
Uh, no.
Like, I mean, every other town I've seen does. And then they post stuff like that, like announcements, but.
Certain departments do.
You have the town of Millville, Mass, and you have Millville Matters, but it doesn't, there is no official town.
Right. Yeah, so we don't have that at this stage of the game. Uh, some of the departments, Board of Health has one, I think. Uh, Library has one. Uh, Police Department has one, I think. Fire Department and EMP has one, so. Um, but, but you're also looking at somebody that's reluctant to post anything, you know? So then it, you have to assign somebody to kind of maintain that. And then the question is to, to what degree do you maintain it? And respond to inquiries and that sort of thing. And then you, you have to be careful you don't cut out some rabbit hole of conversations that aren't productive.
So the way I see, I think.
No, go ahead. Sorry.
Uh, so the way I see it, there basically would be two policies that would need to be placed. One for all general employees of the town or, you know, policies and procedures. And then one specifically pertaining to the Board of Selectmen. Um, in both cases, I would suggest to have a thing for not just social media, but also for like emails as well. To have all town business held on specifically dedicated website, like either emails for specific board members or town employees or whatever. And if you have a social media, have it specifically for the town as well. So that way you kind of keep it completely separate. Because for instance, like if I, as a board member, use my personal email and there's a public records request, I would have to give every single email I have, including ones that don't even have anything to do with, you know, town meetings and stuff, you know, personal. So it would be better for our employees to also have that as well to protect them and also protect their privacy. And also just to make it something simpler, you know, to keep it as separate as possible. But.
And Peter, you can maybe see what the town council recommends. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, so I think the other part is to look for what, yeah, that, that piece plus I am gonna be engaging a consultant using the bu, budget money I have for the updating of personnel policies, which would include exactly this sort of thing. And in looking at that, you can then also see what aspects of that might be applicable to incorporating in your Board of Selectmen policies and procedures. Not to be redundant, but sometimes two slices of the apple can be good.
Mm-hmm.
You know, um, so we'll figure something out. And, and yes, separately, I had something as well to
Yes.
for you to consider adding to this. You'll, you'll notice in there, there's a policies and procedures regarding parades and toll days and that sort of thing, right? You have an approval form. Well, it's come up uh as we, we learn more, you know, one or more of the town's facilities uh occasionally may be used by independent groups. And the, the question is whether we should have, and it, it makes sense uh to have those independent groups, the extent we're either renting or allowing them to use the, the facility um have sufficient uh liability insurance, including, you know, and providing a certificate and arguably providing a certificate where the town is also named on their liability policy. And that's uh recommended by our insurance company. That's recommended, you know, I'm seeking counsel just to make sure that they don't I'm, I, you know, I think they would confirm the same recommendation. It would be my recommendation again to protect the town that to the extent we do let private groups use facilities. It doesn't happen too often, but when it does, we should be sure that they have evidence of liability insurance coverage. We get them to sign an indemnity, but we probably want to have that as a policy here for you guys in your policy and procedure manual. Don't know what you're thinking about that, but that's, you know, something to think about and maybe we do incorporate that. It'll work on some recommendations further.
Um, another thing um would be to update um, except policies and procedures still refer to the executive secretary. So that'd be something.
Yeah.
A little overdue.
Yep.
Okay. I think this is good that we did a little bit of a review. This was on our goals way, way back when. Oh, better late than ever. Um, we can keep the discussion going. And Peter, I think once you speak with the town council and the insurance contact on updating that, that'll be really helpful. Um.
Yep.
It's funny when people say, what do you do for Boris Select? And I said, I do two things and try and like minimize the risk to the town and make sure that any money someone gives us, we spend. Like, most of the two things I'm trying to make sure that we do is limit our risk and exposure and trying to invest as much as we can. Okay. Um. So the next item, ratify the police and fire Teamsters local ones their union contract. So Peter, I looked at those. That looked like everything we've already reviewed and discussed.
Yep. So uh, these reflect all of the MOAs that the board, your board did on uh this, this board did for the uh uh Teamsters firefighters unit. Also reflects the latest version of the police department. Uh, you know, that we've been back and forth on some wording of it, whatever, but it reflects the MOAs that were approved and signed off by the town. This is just memorializing those updated uh changes to the contract into the contract. Both contracts have been reviewed by council. I've reviewed them in detail. And uh, so they're ready for signature uh after you formally vote to ratify. And then they'll be left out for signatures.
So Peter, I think obviously we can do that in this meeting, but one thing I was noticing is the police officer's contract expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Yeah, so we update, we're gonna start again. So it, it got done. That's right. We, we did the MOA. I forget when it was done, but I've been back and forth with the union guy to get a clean draft here. And here we are today.
Okay.
So we're halfway through it.
Okay. So looking to ratify the, looking for a motion to ratify the police officer's Teamsters local one seventy labor agreement. Which is in effect from July first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Come on.
Thank you, Todd. Looking for a second?
I can.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? I think this has been discussed at length, so. Okay, all those in favor? Andrew?
I.
Todd? And I am, and I. Okay. And then looking for motion for the firefighters. Contract.
So I moved to, um, approve the. Firefighters, um, Teamster, uh, Teamsters local one seventy, um, collective bargaining agreement effective June first, July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Sorry.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, um, any discussion? All those in favor? Andrew?
I.
Todd?
Hi.
Jennifer is I. Okay, great.
They'll have clean copies printed and put out in the top drawer. Um, ideally, all three of you signed it. Otherwise, maybe you would just as soon follow the best practice of the chair signing things on your behalf.
Okay.
We'll let you know. Clean or ready to sign.
Okay. I feel like you should start on the police officer one now. Since it expires twenty twenty-three, like you have a year and three months.
We know, we, well, the, we're required to start it. So. The union rep, Ken Bergen, will send me a letter to say we would like to start negotiations.
Okay.
And there's a date by which he has to do that.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Um, all right, so. Six F, discussion of in-person meetings. Um. So I thought we should maybe start in-person meetings in April. Um. And I thought. We would maybe do all of them in person. And then maybe do July and August Zoom just for summer. So people, if they're in different places. And then start in September, all in person. And then. We could go to Zoom if we know a snowstorm is coming or something like that, you know, in. November, December, January, February, March of next. Next winter, but I thought something like that. But at least I thought we'd do our next meeting in April in person and the next two meetings in April in person. So anyone have any concerns? Or would you like to do a schedule of like one in person, one not in person? Or what do you all think?
I don't think, I'm fine with going back.
Yeah, impression of fine.
Okay. All right. So starting in April, we will be in person. It'll be good to see everyone. Okay, so old business, ARPA update.
Yeah, so I, I don't know that I'm asking for your approval tonight, but I'm just giving you the heads up on the basketball court, uh, game plan. I talked to Kevin Del Giszi, who's the. Chair of the Recreation Commission, which is, has very few members. He's roping, uh. Uh, Chief Coop into joining. You would have to appoint him in a future meeting. Uh, but they, you know, Kevin wants to do the, uh, basketball court at the current playground, right at the police station. It's a. Low cost, high impact recreational, um. Use of that space and ARPA money is readily available to be used for that without any. Uh, you know. Concern that it's, uh, inappropriate for use of ARPA funds. So. Wh- when there's more specifics known, uh, you know, I'd, I'd be coming to you for a particular vote. The magnitude of it's likely to be ten to fifteen thousand, might be ten. Might be fifteen. There may be other, you know, in kind and the even dollar. Uh, funding from other sources to, uh, assist. Getting something that might even have lights, uh, at night available. So that's what Kevin's. Trying to see if he can make happen. And he's been talking to Brian Malali about the, the ease of. Getting it paved and prepped and paved and that sort of thing. So. The number there is, that is pretty good. And Kevin also has in the rec department, they do have. Five thousand dollars in their budget for maintenance of. Sites. So that's additional resource to be used. Okay? So I just wanted to give you that heads up. Maybe next time there'll be some more information at your next meeting.
Okay.
For a decision.
Do we know where it might be?
Yeah, right, exactly where the playground that's been closed for two years now. Yep. So it'd be. Not replacing that equipment and be removing that equipment, prepping the site, paving it. Uh, putting in, I don't know how many, you know, two courts, one court, you know, it depends. Hoops and whatnot and fenced in and, you know.
Possibility of selling that property still on the table, like.
So even, so if it's sold even then, probably unlikely, I would say, uh, in that regard, that's not the highest. Priority for the use of that parcel. It's pretty valuable property. I think what you get for it is. Not worth, uh, much, frankly. But that's a fair question. Why would you do that if you're gonna get rid of it? Yeah.
Yeah. I think at the next Capitol meeting, we'll probably be talking more about the town hall and that site as a whole. So then, and that means next week and then the week after, we'll all meet again. So we can.
That's right. Yep.
Peter provides with nothing.
That's right. As the chair.
Um, okay, great. So the annual town report for the Boris Selectmen. So I know this is like stealing thunder for that, you know, people will be. Maybe a couple of updates with Peter's help today. Um. So we talked about the new people that joined us and, you know, Adrian, um, gone. So still trying because of pandemic, but again, Peter's done a great job. And, um, I did post a Facebook. Post a sign came up in my memories. I was just like, hey, you know, looking for feedback. And I was like, you know, I should say thank you to. Andrew and Todd for being such big teammates and other people. And I forgot, Peter. And I, someone said, hey, what about Pete? And I was getting nervous on the, he's such a. But I don't know if they would know Peter and I joke around like that.
Well, but your words here are very kind, but, uh, you know, nothing I do can be done without all sorts of people that are working for the town.
That's true. Well, I couldn't list out the whole town hall. So I put the town hall staff. So if you work in the town hall, know that your efforts have gone. Complete, we have completely noticed your efforts as well. Um, I put, we made really good progress in terms of refinances, which I think we have. I thank Senator Soder and Fatman for their recent, um, investments. So Soder got us forty-five thousand for the renovation of the elementary school. And Senator Fatman got us seventy-five thousand to renovate the salt shed. Um, we also received more than two hundred and eighty-eight thousand from the state. From the CARES.
Yeah, through the state. It's through the state from the CARES Act. Yeah.
Thank you.
Just technical.
Thanks. From the CARES Act. Um, and with that, we invested in the school district, BBT, we got NULA for the ambulance. PPE for the town, many other investments. Um, and we spent a hundred percent of those funds returning only twenty-six dollars in change, which I think is great. Um, so we need to keep doing the things that we're doing. And then just I put in here our goals that we talked about. At a meeting way, way back. Um. So some we haven't been as. As, um, firm on. So like quarterly updates with the finance committee, I think we only have one during meetings. So. Um, the plan for the town hall. So that's ongoing and certain things have thrown a wrench in there. So. I wish it was done. But I completely understand why it's not. You know what I mean? Like we. We had a lot of things to consider, and I think now we have another. A new plan that emerged that we didn't think was possible, which is great. Um, continue to work with the school district, which we are doing. Um, increase communication and transparency. So. This is something where we've been a little late as well, not having updates quarterly. It may, quarterly might be too much, you know, to ask like the COA and the Board of Health and everyone to come to these meetings. But maybe you want to think about doing this twice a year, like something like that, maybe. And we do it for budget season. Maybe we should do it again in September. Like August, September, something like that. Um, and then the town policies and procedures. So, uh, just started this kind of review that was on the list of goals as well, but. If, you know, at least we got it within the years. So again. Um. I personally wasn't expecting COVID to be such a issue over the last year, and it was. So thankfully, we're moving in the right direction there as well. And then just thank everyone for their support. And I think. Um, just stressing for feedback. That's one thing, you know, we're gonna go into open forum in a couple of minutes. But really, we want to hear from you. Even if you're like, I thought this was the dumbest idea ever. Okay? Temporarily thought it was dumb. Cause maybe, you know, with through that discussion. We'll be like, you know, and you're right, we could have done this instead, and that would have been a lot better. So. I think that. Through that collaboration, you're gonna get better and better ideas. I, you know, I, um. I find that groups get so much more done in such a positive way versus individuals. So. Um, and that's it. And then I guess the only thing to consider would be. I just have our three names. We're potentially getting one or two new board members, depending how the election goes. I don't know if we should add those other board members, but as they're kind of new. Or I don't know if we want to maybe add, hey, we've just gotten new board members in April or something like that. So we can think about that. I don't know. What do you, what does everyone else think?
Did people take out papers for those positions?
One person took out papers for Board of Selectmen that I'm aware of at least. So they.
This report is, uh, for calendar year twenty twenty-one, though, just FYI.
Okay. So maybe leave it.
So it's, yeah, I think you're okay.
Okay. Okay. So then, um. So I think we're good. Peter, do you see anything?
No, no, uh, I think you're good.
Okay. All right. So. Looking for a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen report for the annual town report.
So moved.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay.
Thank you, Todd. And all the, any discussion? Okay, so Andrew?
I.
Close the paper. Thank you. Todd?
Hi.
Jennifer is I. Okay, great. So I'll send, I made a few typos just now, Peter. So I'll. Fix those. I'll send it to you and to Sherry.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Alex, is anyone online for a public forum?
Uh, no comments.
No comments. Okay. Again, dying for comments, feedback, even if you think it was a bad idea or a dumb idea or whatever. Um, okay, selectmen reports? Andrew, Todd? See Todd saying no, Andrew. I guess I just want to reiterate that I'm sorry I left Peter off on my Facebook post. And I've already bought him a pony and a unicorn to make up for it. I have really bought me those things, but just an oversight. That's all it was. Peter's great. He's not a pain in the butt. We just joke around a lot. Maybe too much.
Pain in the neck.
Peter, anything on the town administration?
No, uh, just to say that at your next meeting, I will have a draft of the annual town meeting warrant, first draft of that. There's really not a lot so far that's likely to be on there. We talked about the school stuff. I think the, uh, I have something from the Council on Aging where they just want to. Uh, amend the bylaw related to their meeting schedule, just to provide a little more flexibility. It's pretty straightforward. The question will be what we do, the carryover that, um. Uh, Personnel Bylaw Change that was on the draft of the special town meeting. And if not, then it's gonna have to be a grid type of thing that would go in. To replace the grid that's there, the, you know, the salary.
Yep.
Payroll grid. So have to update that. But so I don't know that that will be in the draft, but that'll be something to talk about, uh, at your next meeting. Also, we should, I should have an update on the Animal Control Officer. Uh, uh, you know, uh, intermunicipal agreement process and budgeting. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled next week on that. Uh, as well. Uh, we have the CPC meeting, so you get an update from the chair on that, as well as perhaps the vice chair, uh, at your next meeting. Um. And, uh, yeah, and glad you did that moment of silence. Lisa was, uh. You know, a sweet lady and always laughed at my jokes. So, uh, that she was just. Nobody had a bad word. She never said a bad word nor had a bad word said about her really. Um, and she was a tough lady going through some tough times for a long time. And, uh. We should all have that kind of strength.
Yeah, totally agree. Um, Peter, one thing, uh, kind of circling back to the budget discussion with, on the school. So we have our. You know, we kind of have our opinions of how we think should be structured. Should I send an email to Jane and?
So you, you and I, you can do it. I can do it. You want me to try, do, write it up? I'll do that tomorrow. However, you want to do it is fine. I can, you know, reinforce if you want to just give a heads up type of thing first, and then I get into the nitty gritty.
Okay, so I'll do that. And I'll put Dr. DeFalcio, um, Matt and Jane.
Jane, yes.
Okay, I'll do that right after this meeting. Great.
Okay. And then tomorrow I'll do my thing.
Yep. And I'll see, of course, and I will see Steve on it. I write that down because I will absolutely.
Sounds like a good pincer strategy.
Okay. Um, items not reasonably anticipated forty hours prior to meeting?
I have nothing except to change, amend the agenda for the next item, because there's a typo. It says March. It should be April fifth.
Oh, yep.
But otherwise, nothing.
So our next meeting will be April fifth at the town hall in person. Um, and then for signatures, we held off on the minutes. And then, so we'll do that next meeting. And then I can, as soon as you let me know that the police officer and firefighters are ready, I can go in and sign those.
Sounds good.
And that will be done there. Okay?
All right.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn meeting at eight forty-seven.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Andrew?
I.
Todd? Okay, great. I love when we finish under two hours. I feel like two hours is the max that we should have for meetings. So. Have a good night, everyone. Enjoy your extra thirteen minutes.
There you go. Thanks so much. Thank you, Alex.